City of Stillwater Television transmits programming 24 hours each day throughout the Stillwater and surrounding area on Sunday Communications Channel 23 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. The purpose of the station is to provide the latest news and information about Stillwater City Government and its services, as well as information on city events. Live broadcasts of the Stillwater City Council, Stillwater Utilities Authority, Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Stillwater Planning Commission air on this station, and replays of these meetings can be found here daily and on demand at stillwater.org. For more information or if you have questions, contact the Office of Marketing and Public Relations at (405) 742-8362, or email news@stillwater.org.
Mark your calendars for the 37th Annual Stillwater Arts Festival, held in downtown Stillwater on April 19th and 20th. Come out on Saturday, April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, April 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and enjoy the arts festival featuring many local and regional artists, food vendors, live entertainment, and more. Admission to the festival is free. The Stillwater Arts Festival is organized and presented by the City of Stillwater, held rain or shine.
Hi, Stillwater. My name is Rob Hill, and I'm the Emergency Management Technician for the City of Stillwater. And today, I'd like to talk to you about storm sirens and our outdoor warning systems for the City of Stillwater, and what it means to you as a resident. Lots of times after we have an activation, we receive phone calls in our office about why I can't hear the storm sirens in my house. Well, let's cover that. First of all, the outdoor warning systems are designed for people outdoors. During the springtime and summertime, lots of people recreate outdoors, have outside jobs, participate in ballgames, camp at lakes, and those people are the people that we're trying to reach to notify that severe weather is threatening the area. So when you say, when you call and you say that you can't hear the storm sirens in your house, technically, the storm sirens are not meant to be heard indoors. Many times, people are concerned, "What do I do when I hear the storm sirens?" When the storm sirens go off for the City of Stillwater, it means that we want you to take immediate action to protect yourselves, your family, and your friends. It doesn't mean go to the TV, turn the TV on, and find out what's going on. It doesn't mean get on your iPhone or your cellphone and surf the web, or go to the computer and find out what's going on. It means that there is a life-threatening emergency, and we need you to take action immediately to save your life. Many of you have called and asked us, "What is the announcement after the storm sirens have activated?" Well, in years past, people had concerns, just like yourselves, about, "Is this a real emergency, or is this a test? Are they doing maintenance?" So we sat down and came up with an answer. After every activation for a life-threatening emergency, we would activate a public address system. This address will tell you who has activated the system, what the emergency is, and what response you need to make as a citizen of Stillwater. So remember, when you hear the tornado sirens go off and you hear the announcement, it's a real emergency. And remember, the testing is done on the first Tuesday of every month at 11:30. And please, after the tornado sirens have activated for a real emergency, do not attempt to drive to a storm shelter.
Good evening, everyone, and we're in a call-to-order the March 24, 2014 City Council meeting, and we are honored tonight to have Haley Brown from Westwood Elementary lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Brown?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, Haley, can I ask you a few questions? Sure, come on back to the podium so we can hear you. Thank you for being here with us tonight, and why don't you tell us a little about yourself? Who's your teacher?
Mr. Salaska at Westwood Elementary.
Ms. Salaska, you're in fifth grade?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful, and what's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is science.
Science, okay. We've had lots of science, and that's good. I like that a lot. What are some fun things you like to do outside of school?
Well, I like to participate in photography and softball.
Photography and softball, very nice, very nice. Well, that's good. So softball's your favorite sport?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful, and who did you bring with you tonight?
I brought my mom, Carla, and my sister Hannah.
Hannah, what grade is your sister Hannah in?
She's in the third grade.
In third grade, well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Do you guys have any, anything?
She did a good job.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much. I'm gonna run down, we're in two quick pictures. And we do have a proclamation this evening, and I saw some honored guests come on out. Now, everyone from the League, is everyone here from League of Women Voters?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was everyone in the League, okay. So yeah, we're here with the League of Women Voters and the proclamation for Sunshine Week. Whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives, and whereas every citizen in our participatory democracy has an inherent right to access government meetings and public records, and whereas an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens, and whereas the protection of every person's right to access to public records and government meetings is a high priority of the Stillwater City Council, and whereas the Stillwater City Council is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operations and seeks to set a standard in this regard, and whereas the Stillwater City Council commits during the Sunshine Week commemorating the anniversary of James Madison's birth and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online, and to ensure that all meetings of deliberative bodies under its jurisdiction are fully noticed and open to the public. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, to hereby proclaim the week of March 16th through 22nd, 2014, in the City of Stillwater, a Sunshine Week, open government. Thank you guys very much. Someone wants to speak?
We didn't get a present.
I've got a pretty one for ya. Does someone want to speak?
Thank you for doing that, and I noticed that everybody-
Ms. James, come up here, come up here.
Everybody here has signed the oath-
Yes, come, you can speak right there.
So I want to thank you for signing the oath. Gina has done that, Cody did it last week, right, and you have done it long ago, you and Councilor Weaver have signed the pledge, so we're hoping that you will remember all the laws and rules and everything to keep your meetings open and the public informed. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Bartley.
Definitely, definitely. All right. There she is, okay, we'll take a quick picture. That'll take us down to the Consent Docket, and we, yes, I'm on the right agenda, we have two items on the Consent Docket. Does anybody wish to remove either item from the Consent Docket?
I'm going to accept the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. And that is approved five to zero, and actually, I failed, I meant at the beginning of the meeting to announce that the SEDA meeting, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting, will be canceled, the item on that agenda is not ready, so we will be canceling that meeting, and we'll be doing that resolution accordingly, I'm assuming.
Sir.
Okay. That'll take us down to public comment, not scheduled, or comment not scheduled for public hearing, and we do have two requests to speak, and the first is from James Ryan.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. For over 60 years, the Stillwater Industrial Foundation has endeavored, along with the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Stillwater government officials, to recruit and retain industry in Stillwater for the economic benefit of the community and its surroundings. A recent case in point was CIF's important role in ASCO's decision to locate in Stillwater. As our foundation looks to the future of economic and industrial development in Stillwater, we recognize the critical importance of adequate infrastructure to the potential industrial clients we seek. Toward that end, any decisions made by the City Council or SUA that promote the continued enhancement of Stillwater's infrastructure are greatly welcomed. Infrastructure improvements are not always visible to the public, nor is their need always obvious to the casual observer, but I'm confident that the combined leadership of this council, supported by those of us in the community who are aware of Stillwater's needs, will find a way to keep our city well-prepared for current and future economic development. Thank you. You're welcome.
And our next request is from Dennis Gronquist.
My name's Dennis Gronquist, 3219 East Peachtree Avenue here in Stillwater. In 1979, voters approved the SUA trust adventure, primarily for what they call "pipeline" and other utility needs. When trustees of a legal trust are allowed to rewrite the rules of the trust, there is a huge potential for corruption to be present. I am certain this would not be allowed in a private trust, but when it's in a public trust, the door is open to legalized corruption and potential for legal entanglements. If it is such a good idea to burden the beneficiaries of the SUA public trust with $70 million of new debt, it should be taken to the vote of the people and not done in the haste without their blessing. You have already taken steps to change the rapidly expiring 50-year trust, as it is now 15 years left before it reverts back to the beneficiaries. I believe your action to extend contracts beyond the expiration date was not legal. At the very least, what you did was unethical, but you did it without public approval. Spending large amounts of money to buy property for such ventures without a mandate from the people is as sleazy as it gets. Think of it this way, there's $18 million a year in excess funds taken by the SUA from the people at this time. That would pay for the desired generation capacity in four years, if it was used for the originally intended purpose. But no city staff wants more taxes in the SUA revenue to do this, and they are good at getting what they want when the council refuses to say no. The council is supposed to look out for the interests of the people, not the wishes of the city staff, that's the city manager's job. The trustees of the SUA are supposed to look out for the interests of the trust and its beneficiaries. Those are different responsibilities. You're treading on thin ice here, you are not elected to break the rules, city councillors or public trustees need to learn the meaning of the word "no." If it is such a good idea, the voters will embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll take us down to public hearings, and there's a memo to postpone. Do we need a motion to postpone?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to postpone this item, this public hearing, to the April 7th agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to postpone this item to April 7th. And that is approved five to zero. Okay, and that'll take us down to resolutions. Now, Mr. Dorman?
We actually need to approve these after the SUA and the SEDA meetings, so I'd ask that you pass this item and come back to it after the SUA and SEDA meetings have been completed.
Okay, and we won't be dealing with the SEDA one, because we won't be having that meeting?
That's correct, sir. It'll only be Item A.
Okay, we won't be dealing with Item A, we'll deal that after our other meetings. Okay, and that'll take us down to ordinances, and we have five ordinances, all on second reading. First ordinance is ordinance 3252. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 29, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Division 2, Improper Parking, Section 29-136 prohibited in certain places, and Section 29-141, Stopping, Standing, and Parking of Buses and Taxi Cabs regulated.
Any questions about this ordinance on second reading?
Not at this time, sir.
Is there a motion on this ordinance?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve 3252 on second reading. It's approved five to zero. Ordinance 3253.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 402 and 410 South Hester Street and 711 West Fourth Avenue from RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate District to HR High-Rise District.
Any questions on 3253?
Move, we approve ordinance 3253.
Second.
Motion and second on 3253. It's approved five to zero. And Item C, ordinance 3254.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1530 West Sixth Avenue and 521-523 and 525 South Walnut Street from RMU Residential Multifamily Urban District to RMI Residential Multifamily Intermediate District.
Questions on 3254?
Move, approval of ordinance number 3254. Second.
Motion and second on 3254. It's approved five to zero. Item D, ordinance 3255.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1202 South Duck Street from RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family District to O Office District.
Questions on 3255?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second on ordinance 3255. That is approved five to zero, and that'll take us down to our last ordinance, ordinance 3256.
An ordinance closing a 27-foot portion of a general utility easement at property addressed as 519 South Chardo Road.
Questions?
Move, approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Counselor Scott on ordinance 3256. And that is also approved five to zero, and it'll take us down to miscellaneous items. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further to report, Seavy.
Okay, councilors?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, I have two quick items. One, Counselor Noble will be on radio tomorrow at 8:15 at KSBI 780 AM, and I'll be on the radio Wednesday morning from 7 to 8 on triple play, 105.5 FM. Then the second item is to remind everyone that we do have an election next Tuesday on April 1st. It's one of those, you should never be able to forget that election day, so make sure you mark it down and go vote April 1st. Anything for upcoming meetings? Okay, so recess?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll recess the City Council meeting, come back to after SUA, and I will call to order the March 24, 2014 meeting of the Stillwater Utility Authority. There are two items on the Consent Docket. Does anyone wish to remove either item from the Consent Docket?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, is there a motion on the Consent Docket?
Move, approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Consent Docket. That is approved four to zero. We do have one request to speak, and that is from Kenny Josie.
Hi, I'm Kenny Josie, I'm the Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and we consider ourselves to be one of the primary business recruitment entities within the community. We work closely with Stillwater Industrial Foundation, you heard Jim earlier. A big part of our focus is new industry, and a lot of that industry is obviously located in the northeast part of town. I wanted to bring a situation to your attention. We were recently selected by a large manufacturing company as the sole site in the state of Oklahoma that they wanted to locate within, and as we started going through the process, we realized that there was an issue with natural gas. ONG told us that because of natural gas supply comes from the southwest part of town, the northeast part of town is at the end of the line, and so there are challenges meeting new business needs depending on the size and intensity of that business. So we had to withdraw our proposal, and the company had to look elsewhere. We've also had similar issues on the southwest side of town as it relates to water and business recruitment. So on behalf of the Chamber, we- So on behalf of the chamber, we want you to be aware of the challenges that we're facing relative to business recruitment and the impact of having inadequate infrastructure is having, and we want to encourage you to find an acceptable funding mechanism as quickly as possible to ensure these projects could be completed in a timely manner.
And that'll take us down to general orders, and the first item under general orders is a bid recommendation for a variable-frequency drive replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Millis?
Hello. Good evening, trustees. I'm Bill Millis, acting director of the Water Utilities Department. Here to talk to you tonight about bid results received for the, as you stated, the replacement of the VFD drives at the wastewater treatment plant. The VFD drives are in the Headworks Building, which is the first part of the wastewater treatment plant, and all the flow into the plant is pumped from that Headworks Building. And the VFDs operate the, control the pumps, tell them when to turn on, when to turn off, speed up and slow down, and... It's not scrolling through like I had hoped, but the Headworks Building was built in 1995, and the VFDs are now, they're obsolete, and the manufacturers don't warrant them anymore, and replacement parts are not available. We've been repairing them for a number of years, but now it's time to replace them. Along with replacing the variable-frequency drives, we'll also replace, add a new power distribution switchboard, and replace an automatic transfer switch, which is key not only for this VFD project, but also for the bar screen project. A couple of months ago, we brought before you the pre-purchase of new replacement bar screen equipment, and before that construction project starts, it will also depend on having this new power distribution board and replacement of the automatic transfer switch. So this is a key project for a couple of different reasons. We opened bids on, I've forgotten the date, February 24th, and we had four bids. The lowest bid was from Dane &amp; Associates for $648,000. We also, for this project, will require technical inspection. The VFD equipment is, you know, more advanced than a routine inspector can inspect, so we have proposed also, or requested, $50,000 for high-level technical inspection of this equipment as it goes, is constructed. The VFD replacement, the design was funded through the operating capital, the operating capital fund, but construction is not, does not currently have a budget here, Mark, and the available funds right now are in the SUA cash balance. There is sufficient money to cover this, and so we would recommend, if you're ready, I'll go through the recommendations, that the trustees award the bid to Dane &amp; Associates, authorize the general manager to execute the construction contract, and authorize expenditures up to $762,800. That includes the $648,000 bid amount, 10% contingency, and $50,000 for inspection services. And these, I apologize, this was meant to scroll through as I talked, just if you wanted reference. This is the Headworks Building at the south end of the wastewater plant. The overview is not coming up for me. I apologize to show you where you are at the plant. These are the inflight pumps, they're 300 horsepower pumps. All the flow of the wastewater plant goes through this pump station. These are the variable-frequency drives, which don't look like much from this view. This is one of the drives pulled out. It's actually inoperable now, and we've just pulled it out.
You're not kidding? That is out of date.
And unless you have any questions, that's all I've got.
Questions for Mr. Millis?
Not at this time, sir.
Has this been budgeted? Was this in the 2014 budget?
No, the design of the project was budgeted in 2013, I believe. The construction was not budgeted, and it is, we propose it to become out of the SUA cash balance, which, Dan, can correct me if I go wrong, is from, I think, additional income to the SUA over what was expected.
That was on the construction side?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
From the construction. And as far as this project goes from a priority standpoint compared to the other projects, is this the next most important project?
The bar screens and the VFD replacement are definitely highest priority projects on the wastewater side.
Any other questions for Mr. Millis?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Trustee, pardon me.
Motion, if there's any discussion, if any?
Move, approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the recommendations. Is there any discussion?
Those VFDs are out of date. It'd be next to impossible to get parts one. If I had to troubleshoot those things, it would be impossible.
That is approved 5 to 0. Next, under general orders, is acquisition real estate for Western Road Water Line, 56 to 44th. Mr. Flady?
Standing. Good evening, trustees. Eric Flady, Water Utilities. All right, tonight I have two projects to request real estate authorization on. Both of these are projects that are associated with our, what we'll call, Water 2040 program. The first one is for the Western Road Water Line. As you may recall, this is the tandem project that's associated with the Perkins Road Booster Pump Station. So this is that paired water line that is also needed to convey or get the water from the 56th Tower to our existing city system. As you can show on the display here, there's the map that shows the alignment. From this, there's nine parcels that will require us to obtain easement from. It's essentially about 7,000 linear foot, 20-foot wide easement that we'd be requesting from landowners for that area. From our preliminary design and going through that process, the best opportunity for us is on the west side of Western Road, as you can see there, between 44th Avenue and 56th Avenues. Pending the real estate acquisition process, once we have the land, it's our goal to move forward with design to be ready for bid by mid-May, or as it was, by May 5th, so early May, as soon as possible here. Our estimated cost for this acquisition is $250,000. That's strictly for the land acquisition. The cost for the real estate services, to go out and solicit and negotiate and whatnot and work with the landowners, is already appropriated and funded. So pending any of your questions, it's recommended that trustees authorize staff to make offers, negotiate prices, and execute easement acquisition agreements for this Western Road Water Line, and authorize expenditures up to $250,000.
Questions for Mr. Flady on this item?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
About a month ago, when we were talking about the pump station getting water to the tower, this was the step getting the water back into us.
That's correct.
And the statement was made, and I want to make sure I'm reading the report correctly, that assuming we get the easements under control, that projected timeframe, construction, meaning construction completed, is still September this year?
That's correct, Mayor. Yes. So this is all contingent on our ability to, you know, kind of how cooperative our landowners will be there. So it's a water line, so hopefully, any damage we will do, of course, we will repair and fix, so.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Is there a motion on this item?
I move, approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item B. That's approved 5 to 0. And that takes us down to Item C.
All right, and on with the second real estate request for the evening. This one is to expedite another aspect, our number-one priority, from the Water 2040 program, to expedite the real estate for replacing our booster pump station that is currently below grade in front of the ONQ at Highway 51 and Country Club, and the associated water line. So that's indicated on the map shown here. It requires approximately two miles of new water line and a new booster pump station for which it's our intent to do a fee simple purchase of the land, to buy that land and permanently build that real property facility on. We've done the baseline hydraulic engineering and field testing and modeling, as well as gone through many iterations of real estate alignments to figure out and determine what is the best course of action, and this is what we have here, which requires a new water line on the north side of Highway 51 that'll be in the O dot right away, and then we'll turn south going down Range Road along the west side that'll then cover 11 parcels, approximately two miles of water line, and again, a 20-foot wide easement. So with that, the total price we have estimated for a real estate acquisition is $550,000. So again, that's for the purchase of the land for the pump, new pump station, and all the easement required down those 11 parcels.
And this is moving the pump station farther west from its current location?
Yes, sir. It does. We went through about six different locations doing hydraulic analysis and just feasibility with many different considerations there to figure out what will be best, so right now we've landed on what we feel is the best choice for this location for our needs.
Any other questions?
Not at this time, sir.
Is there a motion on Item C?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve Item C. Thank you. And that is approved 5 to 0. And that takes us down to Item D, Stillwater Utility Authority Trust Indenture Amendment. Mr. Blankenship.
Good evening, chairman and trustees. I'm Dan Blankenship, director of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. This evening, I'm here to present to you a resolution, SUA Number 2014-1. The resolution contains proposed amendments to the Stillwater, or the Stillwater Utilities Authority Trust Indenture. Just briefly, the modifications, or proposed modifications, are a culmination of many conversations and presentations between the staff and the trustees, and it's, the proposed modifications are a result of those conversations. The changes are included, are a supermajority is required to issue debt, and that is added to the, as a proposed amendment, which would mean that four out of five of the trustees would have to vote in favor of any debt issued. It increases the debt limitation from 10% to 40%, which is much more consistent with the magnitude of the projects, utility system projects that are current and future. It adds additional limitation with regard to the debt limitation that bonds and notes cannot be issued if it required an increase in rates for that specific purpose. And then it also requires the trust then to adopt and periodically review and reaffirm a debt management policy, similar to the guideline that I had provided to the trustees in January that's from the GFOA. And simply, those are the changes that, or proposed changes that we have for the trust indenture.
Are there any other changes? Is that...
Just one more. There's an additional exception for where you have a scenario where a trust issuance of debt would be paid for by some fund other than by trust funds themselves. In other words, money derived from ratepayers or from the one-cent sales tax.
Yeah, it's been traditional that the trust issued debt, say, on behalf of the city on master lease for equipment, general fund. Also, the transportation bonds on the half-cent sales tax, those were issued through the SUA, and then any other contract or agreement, such as the agreement with GRDA, which provides a capacity payment. So those are examples of those other collateral sources or other funds.
Would, in the last couple of years, we've entered into agreements with some other water districts to, thinking of Lone Chimney, for example, where we were selling them water if there was a situation where another water district or another community was going, needed, wanted to buy water from us, but it involved the building of a pipeline, would, but the payment for that pipeline would be coming from another community? Would that fall under...
That, yes, that would fall under that exception because the payment would be contingent upon building that pipeline, and so we wouldn't, actually, that would be a new revenue source if we had to issue debt to build the pipeline, and then we would receive the revenue source after we've built the pipeline. So yes, that would fall under that particular exception.
Because the collateral revenue source is, simply put, is if you have a source to make the payments from any place besides your customers. The customers of the city systems would not be charged if it's a source that the customers don't have to pay. If it's coming from somewhere else, from another entity through an agreement, and that's going to pay forth, and that's exempt. The restrictions are intended to protect the customers of the SUA, to ensure that the trust doesn't enter lending obligations that would place an additional rate or charge to our customers. So if they're going to be charged, these restrictions now would require they get to vote on it, if they're going to be charged, if it exceeds those amounts. But if the source of funds is, again, as Mr. Dorman told me, it's a legal term of art, a collateral revenue source means the source is from someplace other than our rate payer.
Other than your normal rate, your revenue stream for the SUA.
Which is our rate revenue and the one-cent sales tax.
One-cent sales tax.
And I don't know if this is a question for you or for Mr. Dorman, but a comment was made earlier that the trust was adopted by a vote of the people. I don't believe that's correct.
No, the vote that was taken in 1979 was to adopt the one-cent sales tax and also to approve the initial bonds that were issued under this trust. But the trust itself was created by a group of trustees who, at the time, were the city council members seated in 1979.
Any other questions for Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you.
All right, well, I will kick this off. These proposed changes, to me, accomplish what needs to be accomplished. And the two goals that need to be accomplished are protect your ratepayers, both from a rate standpoint, and protect your ratepayers to have the ability to flush the toilet and turn the lights on. These changes do both, in my opinion. It gives the extra protections from a rate standpoint, but it also gives our utility authority the ability to do the projects that need to be done, and that we all have stated we want to get done, and that people have told us they want done. So there's really no question as to which way I'm leaning on this. Is there any other discussion?
And I think that the suggested changes do put some limitations on us as trustees to perform regular routine business, but then beyond that scope, we would go to a vote of the people.
This is a much better approach than what we talked about in the fall and what we talked about in January, and it, in my opinion, really gets to where we need to be.
I agree.
Is there a motion on this resolution?
I would move, acceptance.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept SUA Resolution 2004-1. I have a motion and a second to accept SUA Resolution 2004-1. That is approved five to zero.
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
This is probably my last meeting on council, and six years ago, when I came on, this was one of the major projects that I knew the city needed to get done. And to me, it makes me feel real good tonight that we did it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would add to that, you know, both the vice mayor and myself, you know, we have an election next week, and when I came on council, vice mayor, this was the first thing he explained to me. And I'm glad to see that we made a decision. We left the supermajority vote in the indenture, and I appreciate comments on both sides of the argument. I appreciate Mr. Gronquist's comments. I appreciate the mayor's comments. All that I have heard beyond a few people is to change the indenture, but leave the supermajority vote intact. And as I have done twice on this council, I have had to go back and reconsider a decision that I had made, and to reassure, you know, the citizens, myself, I struggled with this too, and I didn't, I didn't make that a secret. And when I saw the changes, I thought they were, I thought they were very doable, and if citizens are uncomfortable with something that the council decides whether I'm on it, whether I'm not, vice mayor, any of us, they can come to this council room, just like staff and, or just like citizens did tonight, make their opinion heard. And going to a vote of the people, making their opinion heard, it's one in the same. It's one way or the other. And if the citizens don't like it, they'll come in this council room, and we'll have to fix it. I appreciate the staff working with us and the information they've given us. It wasn't an easy decision, but I appreciate it, and I'm glad it's over with.
Okay, it'll take us down to reports from officers and boards. Trustees have anything?
We don't have to vote on the resolution.
Oh, we just voted on it. Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped straight from the general down to the resolution. Or did I vote on the resolution?
You voted on the resolution.
I voted on the resolution.
I thought we voted on item D.
Yeah, kind of, I blurted together. Is that okay, Mr. Dormand?
D and the item are related.
Okay.
Unless you want to vote on the resolution all over again.
No.
Let's do her again.
Okay, I do believe I did say, is there a motion on Resolution 14-1?
That's the way I heard it.
We're good.
Is that what your minister's showing?
Motion to adjourn.
Her motion, the clerk's showing the motion was made on the resolution.
On the resolution, okay. I'm sorry for your confusion.
I would just like to take this opportunity to personally and publicly thank trustee Hopkins for the six years of service. You have been an advocate of the utilities from day one. You have challenged me and my staff on many, many occasions, and I think it's resulted in a much better product, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of all the rate payers and customers of the SUA, because of your service, I think that we are better off today, much better off than we were six years ago. Thank you very much.
We have reports from officers of board.
I just mentioned, Bill, we should have a draft policy that's included in your new rule. In 30 days or so, we'll take a look at it. It will mirror the GFOA financing policy guidelines we've discussed with you before, but Ms. Lamb and Dan Blankenship, myself, work on that with you and Mr. Dormand, and should have your documents. Click that in the microphone.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, nothing further. Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
I move to adjourn SUA.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn SUA. Approved five to zero, SUA is adjourned, and we will reconvene city council, and that will take us back to item nine resolutions. First resolution, item A, Resolution CC 2014-2, which mirrors the SUA.
This basically approves the action of the trustees, and so per the trust indenture, it requires, the trust indenture required a unanimous vote of the trustees. This, it also requires a forfeit vote of the beneficiary, which in this case is the city council, so...
Taking off our trustee hat and we're putting back on our city council hat to vote on this resolution.
Counselor Hopkins, I would be honored to second a motion.
I would be glad to make the motion to accept this resolution.
Second. Motion and a second on Resolution CC 2014-2. That is approved five to zero, and the B item is stricken?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll take us down. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn city council. We are adjourned.
Thank you for your service. I'll see you in the next one.
Pass this down to the clerk.
But I'll, yes.
Right and down.
Thank you.